Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Twin Town Planning Commission. Would you please stand for the pledge of the flag? Records reflect the members that are here. It looks like Bradley Brown is absent this evening. Mission members should receive the draft minutes of October 28th, 2024. Is there any corrections or additions to those minutes?
One word that was... Sorry, boss man.
Help me find it.
It says, uh... Instead of "on" or something, here we go. Yeah, so on delegation and action items, um, it says presenting in James Marks instead of presenting is James Marks. Yes, depression.
Any other corrections or additions to the minutes? Represent what happened, so... I don't know, we entertain a motion?
What's wrong?
Take a motion.
Hunter Second, Bud Bill. Any further discussion? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Carrie, thank you. Delegations and action items. Twin Town Elementary School pre-kindergarten and kindergarten addition. We're looking for final approval for a night. You want to lead us off, and then we'll ask comments from Mr. Marks.
Sir, we have Jim Marks for Carroll County Public Schools. They've gone through, we've checked, the letters are in, they're ready to be released.
Thank you very much. Yes, we're looking forward to building this this summer, and thanks to your help with getting our plans released, it's going to help us begin our bidding process in just two months.
Comments? If not, um...
Move to approve the site plan.
Final site plan approval.
Yeah, fine, remove to, yes, move for final site plan approval for this project.
Any second by the floor? Those in favor of the motion for final approval? Twin Town Elementary School addition, Singapore saying aye?
Aye.
Carrie, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Marks.
Go very much, appreciate it.
Take care.
Have a break, thanks, give again the game, too.
Thank you, Ms. Marks.
Speech today. Uh, this concept site, concept site plan. Harold, you want to lead us off on that?
Yes, sir. So, for most of you, um, this plan goes back a couple of years. They were at the preliminary site plan before, but ran into a problem with their on-site sewage pipe that was too close to a retaining wall. So, after going through, um, you know, different scenarios, Mr. Brennan and city staff and others, engineers, came to a impasse where I guess the site was made somewhat smaller, and, um, and Mr. Brennan will explain the things that, um, that the changes from the original site plan. So, unfortunately, because of the time taken to get this worked out, he has to redo the MDE permits and that type of thing. So, they've lost a lot of time, but they's hung in there and been good sports about it. Right, Bill? So...
Lot of choice in the matter.
Yeah, so what we're looking to do is, um, Mr. Brennan would like to get the site plan, um, get the concept site plan approved, and then possibly if we get, if we go ahead and approve it tonight, he can go back to the county and have them start amending letters he's already gotten approval for. And so he can start his MDE permits.
You're looking for approval on a revised concept plan?
Yes. Brennan, you want to come up?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the Planning Commission. Bill Brennan with being our design group, 300 West Patrick Street, Frederick, Maryland. Um, just, we started this project back in June 2021 with a, um, with the storage facility, and we were able to proceed, we even got an MDE permit for the original final site plan. We've got basically county approval with that. We submitted to MDSHA and got approval for the driveway entrances. And then we hit an issue with, um, as we were preparing the final plans, there was an issue with the existing sewer going through the site. Our original sewer, can you put up on the...
Dan?
We don't have that right now.
We really don't.
Okay, if you take a look, I think some of the submissions in there, I submitted a red line called sewer relocation alternate two.
We're doing it all here. Oh, okay. So...
You viewed the PDFs is what you requested.
Yeah, we don't have that ability tonight.
Oh, you don't have that ability tonight? Okay. Well, basically, what happened is that the town, uh, utility department was concerned about how we were bridging over, the sewer was going through one of our retaining walls. We were relocating it onsite, and we had basically a bridge over the sewer in order to carry the wall. And, um, and the sewer in that location is only about a foot of cover. So, the utility department was very concerned about that, and they asked us to investigate going all the way back to the original manhole upstream, and if we could go on the eastern side of the creek, of the drainage, drainage way, and come down towards Newark Street and then tie back in. Unfortunately, the existing sewer is less than minimum, it's only like 0.3%. I don't want to get too technical here, but as we...
You wait in the line, you lose slope, and you're done.
As we made the pipe longer and around, it even became worse. And then we went to MDE, we talked to MDE because we only had a foot of cover over the sewer in the stream, or less.
Trending enough as it is.
And MDE said, well, initially, they said, yeah, concrete, encased in concrete, we could probably be okay with that. We started amending the permit, and then somebody's from fisheries in MDE said, oh, no, no, we need three feet of cover. Well, we can't get three feet of cover. The existing sewer doesn't even have three feet of cover. So, that's how we got here. Then we went, we had a Zoom meeting, a video conference meeting with the town engineer, the utility department, ourselves, and we came up with, um, compacting the site even more, basically instead of two-way circulation for all the driveways, it would be one-way circulation, and the, the wall, the retaining wall that we need would parallel the sewer line, be five feet off, and the bottom of the wall would go two foot below the invert of the sewer. So, if the utility department ever had to come back in, even if they had to dig up the whole line, they wouldn't affect the wall, and that extra five feet gave them enough room to get a backhoe, a small backhoe down in that area. So, that took from June all the way to October this year to find the solution with all the different entities. So, with that, we, we believe that the site was changed enough and the, the traffic patterns, talking to Darrell, all that, we really wanted to come back and update you and made sure that you were comfortable with the revised site plan so we can move forward. And now we have to amend, all the permits go back through the county, reamend, amend the stormwater, state highway should be okay, but it's been two years, so who knows? We might be back to square one, but I think we're pretty much okay with that. So, we're here to...
You're looking for a concept, revision on the concept. So, preliminary, when that comes through, that'd be after the engineers, and everybody will have to use a little bit. Nights meeting, we're looking at the concept.
Correct. I mean, the biggest item, the biggest changes, the, the access aisles are all one-way now instead of being two-way. And this site is really a tiny site. It's not like we're a shopping center and have people coming in and out. Remote, there's not even a employee there. A lot of these storage facilities with the internet and card readers, everything's done online and access remotely. We're here to answer any of your questions, especially how we, we got here, but, um, you know, we believe that this concept plan addresses any town utility department's concerns, and we also have gotten away from MDE with the stream crossing. We're still impacting some of the wetland buffers, and we have to amend the, amend the permit with that, but I believe we're finally be able to move forward with this plan. Ask for your input and approval.
So, Chairman, they're looking for concept approval.
Revised concept...
Revised concept plan approval.
Yes.
Quick question on the retaining wall, a segmental wall?
Yes.
Modular, modular block?
Armory.
Modular block wall?
Yes. Yep.
I'm good.
Did notice, and this doesn't have anything to do with the concept plan, but Bob Mar fence at the top.
Uh, we could, I'll touch base with the...
That'd be picked up probably by the county or...
About the county or somebody. I did notice Bob Mar fence. You're concerned about that?
Yes.
Okay. I'll let the owner know that.
Yeah, just check, just check codes, just make sure. I was gonna say, don't get kicked, I'm just, you know...
Can we make it a little bit taller?
Over my head.
Okay.
For a motion?
I move to approve the revised concept site plan for storage today, as presented tonight.
Bud Bill?
Yep.
Other discussion? Those in the favor, motion for concept approval? Singapore saying aye?
Aye.
Moves likewise? Meanans?
Well, thank you. Everybody enjoy Thanksgiving. Thanks.
Happy Thanksgiving. Yep.
Like Mountain Brook, uh, kinda at the last minute? A little bit on that?
Yeah, so, um, Marty's here from CLSI to look at a, um, change of plan on the specs you have there. Now, there's a letter with it, if I can just get myself organized here, from CLSI explaining the changes and a little bit about how it benefits us as well, and, and how it's cleaning things up a little bit in that part of the development.
Okay, Mr. Hackett?
Marty Hackett with CLSI. The, uh, good evening for one. This, looked at this, part of this plan from, I think, a couple of months ago, the, the Planning Commission had some comments on two intersections, I believe. There was one that was shown, um, it's not a very, uh...
You want one of these?
Yes, that intersection there, yeah. It's the one where there, it shows a, a big open area, and it's very, both those street intersections are very close with probably within 40, 50 feet of each other. We looked at that. The other one was, is the road that is right off the boulevard, which has a dead end and had about five lots on it.
The one with the red lines, the red is your revised plan, and the gray line is the old one.
Here we go. Thank you, Dan. Right, okay, so this is, right, so you got rid of this to go to a single street?
Got rid of this and that intersection.
Here we go.
Yeah.
Do you see it?
No, we can't see it there, but it's up there now.
Yeah. Okay, but that wasn't too close to... Right.
Can we have it on the map?
Yep. There you go. That's the old one.
That's where we came up with.
I'm gonna kind of drop a somewhat large bomb on you here. I mean, we, we have spent, uh, the commission has, has spent some time and gotten a little smarter about some things, we think, we hope. And in that vein, as I look at this plan, um, I'm wondering, are we better served to move townhouses more into the center so that the density is decreasing as you get out towards the edges of the site, and especially as you get out towards the limits of the city? How, how big a change is that, and, you know, I mean, I recognize it's a big change, but is that a fatal change?
It's, that's, that's a huge change to the plan. I mean, that, where I'm changing a few roads and alignments now, it's, it would be flipping the entire plan, change. Again, this is very similar to the approved concept plan, all we were doing was adjusting so...
And I understand, and I know I'm throwing a very large wrench, but again, you know, I feel like we, um, you know, maybe a little more attuned to some of these things than we were in the past. So, I just, I offer that out there, and I welcome y'all's comments on that.
Well, and the townhouses themselves, I guess my biggest concern is that these appear to be like they're going to be front-loaded townhouses, and I don't, I thought we decided we weren't going to do front-loaded townhouses.
I think the, the discussion ended up with townhomes along the perimeter didn't have to have the alleys, but where, where it was practical to have townhomes on, on both sides, like where an alley could serve two rows of townhomes, that that's where we were requiring it.
Those frontloads and rearload townhouses, the way they're designed is, is accordance to the, the approved concept plan. We did not change. If there are frontloads there, we put them as frontloads on, on the plan.
Center section, this, this section here?
Yes, correct.
This is considered the perimeter, I guess?
Well, I, you know, that, that's a good question, you know, when you say perimeter, is it perimeter of the site or perimeter of the townhouse group? And I thought we were talking about perimeter of the sites, you know, where you, you know, where it wasn't really feasible because of, of distances to the property line.
Front entrance coming in to this site altogether, or the overall?
No, here, like, on...
This is phase one.
Essentially, this run here at McKinley Road is, is, you know, and, and the run on the right-hand side of Sugarloaf Road.
Definitely perimeter, right?
Yeah, right, those, the section on Shasta Road is, wouldn't be a question in that regard, but...
Let me, question, I mean. As far as changing the, I'm sorry, yeah, changing the roads, I like the change in the roads, I am concerned a little bit, it's, it's like it's a long way to get all the way back here, and there's like only one way in and out.
Talking about Fairweather Street, right?
Fairweather Court.
It says on the paperwork in front of me, it was changed to Fairweather Street, but on the drawing it says Fairweather Court. So, is it a court or is it a street? If it's a street, I'm concerned that we got a dead-end street, which is something we normally don't like to see.
That ends also a kind of, that eventually it will be continued, so I believe if we look at the comprehensive plan map, we'll see that the parcel adjacent to this that's, is, uh, I think designated for suburban residential land use. So...
Classified as a cul-de-sac will be connected on to the phase two?
Well, for one, Fairweather...
We're talking about 51 lots on that.
So, along, along this boundary, I believe, is, is R20 on the comp plan.
Right. Yeah, McKinley Road would connect eventually, right?
Where, where does that cul-de-sac connect to? That always... So, we got 20 some houses on that cul-de-sac?
Yeah.
Give or take. That's all right, I don't want to hold you to it, but... So, you're calling, you're still calling Fairweather Court is the section where the cul-de-sac is? I just wasn't clear, because I've seen one thing here and one thing in front of me.
Marty, could you comment on about how many linear feet of road this reduces?
It's, it's a difference of about 1,800 feet, pushing 2,000 feet of roadway, which it's, it's a more efficient design for everybody, and long-term, the city maintains it, and it's, you're pushing almost a half mile of...
I like the way, I like the way you phrased that, it reduced the cost to the city.
Right.
It's gonna reduce your costs a lot upfront, a lot more.
Yeah, but they build it once, we maintain it forever.
So, we got, how many homes total here?
It's the same...
200 and, what is it?
Same amount of townhouses and the same amount of singles that was approved, I think it was. Phase?
That's about right.
The first phase.
Okay. Where do we have from the back end of that zone, the second way out? Generally said, or guidelines, is anything over 50 lots? There's two means of egress in and out. How do we accomplish that with this?
There is two ways in and out. On this entire site, except for that 20 lots on the cul-de-sac, it ties into...
194, comes out to 194. That's your only way out.
That's the only way out there.
As far as the, the actual site itself, well, we're in the process of working on with, obviously, the boulevard and, and everything that's happening there. I mean, you want to...
So, we've, we've been trying to coordinate all of this with, certainly keeping Carroll County planning in the loop on it, but also working with the state highway administration for the eventual turning over of what's on here as Denali Boulevard as a state road, if the road ever is completed all the way around the city. So, state highway is agreeable in concept to accepting this road as a future state highway, so that's going to influence a lot of the design detail that CLSI puts into it at the preliminary plan stage. So, the initial thought was to basically replicate the existing section of Antrim Boulevard, we'll need to work through because we don't know if that still meets the current state highway specs or not. But the boulevard entrance is probably going to be problematic with state highway with the intersection design with Route 194, and also we need to think about what the other side of Route 194 is going to be. So, we don't want a divided, you know, a split boulevard entrance that comes into 194 on one side, and then there's a, you know, two contiguous, you know, lanes of traffic on the opposite side. So, we really need to think through how this is going to function if, I'll say when, eventually the entire road is constructed. So, there's, at this point, there's still some unknowns with, with, there's still some unknowns as far as the intersection design with Route 194, and whether it's going to be a boulevard entrance, or whether there's going to be an emergency access point that we work out. So, we, we don't have any of that finalized at this point. So we, we don't have any of that finalized at this point.
Anybody check with Board of Education, can the schools in this area handle it?
When we get farther along in the preliminary plan stage, that's when we do the adequate facilities checks. And the school, the school's really good about certifying for us quickly.
The boulevard right now that we have proposed, if, if, if the state comes involved, they may, they may want, not want that grass strip in the middle and they may want it to set up more along the lines of what you see Antrim Boulevard. Antrim Boulevard was a state road at one time that they went ahead and it actually, they dedicated it to the county, I believe, at one point in time. Does the city, the city not maintain that now, correct?
We do now. We, we, we accepted it from the county when Dollar General was going in.
Um, and that's something that's going, during the process, you know, project this size, obviously it's not happening overnight. We're just trying to get, you know, the plan, if that road changes, we're going to have to make that adjustment as well to the boulevard. What we did, the answer is, I forget who it was, but we do have a, we showed a emergency access in the construction plans, the preliminary plans, there was an emergency access down the street from this, coming off of 194 as well. There's two, and we, we set it up to come in where Bear Court is.
Temporary. Like coming from, from, from 194 here, going this way to.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Temporary access.
That's correct.
Are those lots part of, part of the property in this or they, is that a separate piece of ground?
Um.
Separate ownership or is that owned by the same?
Commercial.
Track A and B. That would be on track B if I'm not mistaken, right?
Yeah, it's actually, roadway coming across is, the, the actual tracks itself is still owned by the Ridgely family, the people that own the entire farm for access. And then we work with.
They're needing, they're needing access through that tract.
Correct.
Okay.
Have you checked with, with electric company, can they handle this on the grid or is it going to have to have a new power station?
Plans get sent out to the power company.
Oh, yeah.
Concept.
Why make them spend any more money if it won't work?
Just quick question. Sugarloaf Street and Renner Street, that intersection there coming off the boulevard, there's going to be a 288 houses and.
Shows it on the plan. It's 281 total, both sides of the boulevard, the entire, the entire first phase that's on this side of the floodplain. Phase two is on the other side. It heads over toward Flowserve.
Well, I'm just, that's not going to happen. Seems like it's going to be a lot being dumped onto that boulevard. That's my opinion. I don't know about you guys.
Well, I mean, it, it, it would be at, at, designed at the capacity of a regular road. I mean, how many, you know what I mean?
Just bringing it up. I, I just.
Cause I, I think what's, there is some, there is a, some semantic confusion here because what Marty is looking at is that this is eventually going to be continuous road and so each of these different places need two access points to this road. And I think that there, we're still also thinking, the commission is looking at this and saying, this is all one development with one single access point to 194. And so.
I mean.
I mean, and that's so that which, which then brings up your temporary access across parcel B or track B here.
Right now with the lane configuration we have with the boulevard, it's obviously it's a bifurcated highway, but I mean, obviously the ADTs on that can handle well greater than what just this is. I mean, we got, we got basically, we have a 12-foot travelway each way, plus the bike lanes, which is wider than Maryland Route 30, which handles tens of thousands of vehicles.
13,000 vehicles a day come up 140, so.
That's in Tony Town.
That's, that's, yeah. I mean, I, that's, that's, you know, kind of the least of my concern.
Awful lot of traffic until that bypass gets put in, going to be hitting Frederick Street every day and every night. I don't know if town can handle it.
Almost all the way out of town at this point where, where this comes in.
Where they going? They're going up to the square and heading towards Westminster. Maybe half of that will go to Frederick, whatever, but that's a lot of extra traffic. You complain about traffic now, imagine what this is going to be.
I believe during the concept plan phase, the planning commission was discussing so much development prior to making sure that connection's made from through Flowserve on the Maryland Route 140 and that's complete. That's, that's a, that's a solution, a, a solution that is in the foreseeable future, which is not just going to benefit this, it's going to benefit the, the traffic flows dealing with the square.
Right. When, when the road is completed through, that will alleviate, you know, right. Your, your, your point is well taken though, that if anybody that's coming out of here and going to Westminster. For the foreseeable future is going to have to go up to the light and turn right.
Right.
One north.
That road goes away.
Even Hanover, anywhere Pennsylvania is going to come out that way now.
Right, right, right. Going on through to Little Town.
There's no doubt. I mean, it, it generates car traffic, vehicle traffic, but once this gets through, it's really going to assist on your, your tractor trailer traffic.
Eventually, yes.
What, what commitment do we have that boulevard will be completed from 194 to 140?
We're still working with Flowserve to try to get the, get the easement across their property and the, you know, the commitment is with, you know, with phase two and, and we will, we have discussed the idea of doing a development rights and responsibilities agreement with Mountain Brook. And that would lay out, you know, what everybody's responsibilities would be. So ultimately the piece that crosses Flowserve, we anticipate there's going to have to be a city stake in that.
My concern is we allow phase one to go in and the rest sets there.
Yeah.
We're, we're, we're left with that whole area undeveloped, no bypass, no boulevard and still 200 and some, right, coming out in one spot.
Everybody's got two cars.
Thinking about who's making the commitment and where, where's the developer's responsibility here to foresee this all the way through?
Well, if you think of, of the city as an infinite entity, that, you know, we will be here 100 years from now, think about how long it took. Meadowbrook before Keenan Street was connected. You know, there was one spot where you had to know, remember just where to turn to be able to get from Roberts Mill Run out to York Street. There was.
How did that happen?
So that was, that was, well, part of it was.
We know how that happened and that's why.
Well, not the, not the, not O'Brien. I'm not talking about O'Brien. I'm talking about Meadowbrook. It was a very long time that we had two dead ends of Keenan Street. And you had to work your way across Morning Frost and Bentley, I believe it was, to come out to Crimson Avenue to get back out to 194. So, you know, we, we lived with that condition for many, many years until the market came back and we had adequate facilities that Meadowbrook could build sections four, five and six that connected Keenan Street. So for us, I think worst case would be if the market tanks again and it doesn't make sense to build phase two, it's going to sit, but eventually.
Just because we made mistakes in the past doesn't mean we should make them in the future.
Well, again, there's no.
I don't want to sit and wait five to 10 years for this. I just.
I'm not sure who said bypass. Part, even if it goes out to 140, that's not a bypass.
No, it's half of it.
A portion of it, that's all. Piece of the puzzle.
So that's not going to alleviate, in my opinion, I think everybody might, you know what I'm getting at?
But it alleviates a portion. It would, yes, it would take some of it away.
It'd take care of this development, hopefully.
Do anything for the town.
No, it won't.
Well, it, it's going to assist the square.
It will, yeah.
Well, I can.
Explain that, please.
Absolutely.
Explain that to me.
Tractor trailers coming through.
From Frederick to.
Either way.
Okay.
From Hanover, coming into the square.
Okay.
Instead of making a right-hand turn and wiping out the corner, taking out the buildings or wherever, or taking up traffic to get through, they go through, they get to the, 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 the new road and they go out to a modernized intersection, which is probably going to be a roundabout. They go around the roundabout, much safer without the congestion they're dealing with crossing over lanes. Same thing on the other way. Coming from Frederick, it's a little out of the way, but you go up there and then you come straight on through. So that leg, it does, it, it assists it. Did I explain that? I mean, it's not going to solve everybody's problems, but that's how you, place will function.
Appreciate it.
No.
Okay, that's better understanding.
Comments? I mean.
Remember, we're going to be in front of you guys many more times, I think, because it's such a large project. And we're not here for approval of the preliminary plan overall. All we're doing was addressing some comments that the town had previously, that we, we can take it that much further and start addressing comments based on what I haven't read versus moving forward and then coming back in here after doing that and then have to make the change later. We're just trying to do our homework upfront.
I'm, I'm not ready to make any commitments at this time.
Commitments for what, Mr. Parker?
For a revised concept plan.
I guess the, really the question is, do you like what's before you now with, with the reduced roadways over the original design or not? That's really the question for tonight.
Yes, that part's yes, but does that resolve the issues that we have, the overall issues? No, it doesn't.
That's correct, but remember, we're, we're addressing comments based on an approved concept plan already. And I know those issues were back then and they're going to remain in effect. But as we go forward, inching the project toward final and stuff, or just to get preliminary plan approval, would be to, are we addressing and changing these roads as you see in red? That's really the only, that's, that's what we're presenting tonight. We know we have, we have boulevard issues, entrance issues, emergency access, connections and all that. That will probably be part of the developer responsibility, rights and responsibility agreement, the DARA, in the future. So again.
Mr. Chairman, maybe another way to look at it, what was before the changes redlined to, shown to you guys today, the other drawing is what it was. So do you not see, and I'm asking rhetorically, do you not see an improvement of the flow of that site? If you do, then that's how this is going to go over the next, because I mean, there's 200 and some pages of plans out there to look at if you get bored. And sort of some of these things will, will change and evolve a little bit. So four years ago, when I came here, not one plan was on anybody's radar with respect to, to the bypass, not one. So far, we've not had one person that we've asked not entertain a portion of the bypass. So it's, it's new to everybody, you know, the expense to, to the developer at this site and others. It's going to take, take, it's going to take some leaps of faith sometimes too, because I know what you're saying about the O'Brien thing with that one developer and, and with Meadowbrook four, five and six, that was planned. Now, do you like what you saw tonight better than what was there before?
I'll be honest with you, I didn't like the last plan. I don't like this one. I think it's too high density and it's going to interfere with the safety and the traffic in the city of Tony Town. I'm here for making Tony Town a better place and a safe place. I'm not here to make money.
Jay, can I make a few comments?
Well, you see, we're at a procedural issue where they're trying to address comments in piecemeal fashion so that they know they're on the right track. And I think that was the purpose of the smaller road. I mean, that's what I got from today's discussion was they've moved the road smaller. You all gave an approved concept plan and they're designing consistent with that. There is still a lot of hurdles they have to go through. You know, Mr. Hackett talked about that, but, you know, traffic and all the other things they still have to do, but they can't get to the next phase until they have something that's at least somewhat doable in your mind. So if you have like black and white, if you say, well, it's, this is not doable for any reason, well, then that's fine. But if it's like, well, it's doable if, and you come up with the ifs of, you can address traffic, you can address water, sewer, schools, all the things you brought up tonight, they can't do any of that addressing until they design a little bit more, is the way I understand it. So while you don't have to take action tonight, if they're not headed in the right direction, they're not going to design anything anymore. They're going to, I don't, I don't know. I guess they'll talk to Darrell and see what can happen. But that's, I guess, Mr. Hackett, that's why you're here tonight is to see, do you like the changes we made?
That's correct. And, and Jay, you said about making the road smaller. We, we have less road, but the roads are the same width. We didn't change any width.
That's what I mean. Less, less overall impervious surface. That's the new currency. You know, back in the day, Mr. Parker, when we started doing this water, when sewer was the currency, now it's stormwater. And so we're trying to, to lower the impact on that and then we're trying to lower the impact on how we take care of the road. So I think that's what they're here to say. And so I guess it is surprising that Mr. Hackett hears that, oh, we have other concerns. Maybe he can address those concerns if he were prepared to do so, but I, I don't know. I, I don't know. What is, what's the desire of the, the developer? I mean, what, what do you, what do you hope to get out of here, Marty, today?
Um, only basically, just call it approval of the, what's in red, so we can start making the changes to the road designs and everything that's associated with it that's based on red. We're not changing, we're not changing boulevards. We're not asking for, it's just so we can take our preliminary plans and get them more in line to, to basically the two concerns that the planning commission had previously, this red line addresses that and went just a little further where we, we took that one loop road and made it, to combine it just to make sure we, we lessen the intersections on the, on the main road. That's the only thing that I was under the impression we were coming in for.
More comments?
And we don't want to, I mean, I don't want to bring this project to a stop by any means. I think although, you know, and, and. And I understand your point right about density, you know, but it doesn't change the overall density. It's still the same number of houses. They could put that many single-family houses and a lot more road and a lot more sewer and a lot more water to service that. Well, within their rights and we really at that point wouldn't have any grounds to stop that because it would be within zoning, correct? So in terms of total number of units, that's not something that's going to change. The, the difference is how they are arranged on the site and what that buys both the city and, and, and the world at large in terms of reduced footprints and, and reduced amount of groundwater management. Reduced overall facilities that the city eventually would have to maintain. This, this is a, a concept plan that had been already approved. And so he's looking at a revision to that approved concept plan that. Resolves some of the city's questions regarding intersections and closeness of intersections and also reduces the overall impact on the environment, all of which are good things. I'm, I'm, I'm trying to work that out in my head now.
Okay, because it seems like we're just going on and on.
I'm, I'm, yeah, so I'm.
Get it out and I'll pick out the words.
All right. So essentially, that was a long-winded saying, long-winded way of saying I move to accept this. I move to accept this revision to the concept, to the previously approved concept plan for this phase.
Second to that motion.
I'll second that.
Mars. Discussion, comments from the floor, county.
One question? Um, so, what you have shown in red, is it actually, it's like less houses than what was shown before?
Same amount of single-family homes, same amount of townhomes. The, the density did not change.
Oh, just, just this one area right here by, it's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven. Goes down to one, that, seven, eleven goes down to seven in that area.
Just relocate it through the call.
They squeezed in there.
That's correct.
Okay, yep.
Comments?
Only other comment I have is that the, the changes in red to the streets, I believe, is an improvement, so we'll say that.
That's what tonight's all about.
All right. Chris?
Yes.
Mars?
Yes, sir.
Corner.
No.
For four, one against, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for working with us. Happy holiday, happy Thanksgiving.
Marty, thanks.
Marty.
There was your reports next.
Okay, so, just real, real quickly, Sheetz Public Works Agreement is off to another lands, and we hope to get that back soon so we can take Sheetz off of our agenda. City manager and myself met with visionaries to discuss improvements to the McDonald's site. Number of meetings with city staff and CDM Smith on Maryland Compassionate Care and Wellness LLC, third amended. So that's moving along. I have some information for you next time we meet on some of the impervious takeaways from different agencies. So as you all know, there's been a zoning certificate issued for the Teva site, the building's down. It's going to look nice, and I'm hoping we hear something in the new year about what's going to go there. Then when Sheetz goes off the agenda, we'll put something else back on there. That's a good thing. So Murphy's Choice, that's back in our radar, that's the lot to the left of the bowling house, excuse me, entrance. Excuse me, ABZA hearing about two years ago, said that for any business to go in there, that dwelling has to be hooked, that building has to be hooked up to the city sewer. That's already been engineered, that should probably be flying pretty soon, so, you know, so maybe we'll have another viable business back in there.
But you said, that's the, on the left, when you drop, going into the bowling house?
Yeah, that house and lot, like four or five acres.
Where Murphy used to be.
Yeah, where Aqua Concepts was, yes.
Remember what they were penalized, because they cut that whole woods out, and wasn't that a big deal then?
I don't know about that.
I think Junior Dawkins owned it when that happened.
Other than that, sir, that's, that's all I have, unless you all have questions for me.
Real quick, what is compassionate care and wellness? What is?
That was cure leaf.
Thank you.
Yes, sorry, I thought I had a note in there last month. So, yeah, so, just like a VAPCO, anytime there's been activity at the site before, it will be an amended site.
That is now cured.
Yeah, all those, all those letters.
Chris, when is your name coming off here?
Uh, that is a, well, that'll be, that'll be up to council, and I think it has kind of gotten shelved, but I think we need to bring that up, because that, that is up to council as to whether they want to amend the PWA.
A lot of these have been carried on enough. Off.
That's true, sir. So-
Nothing more on Discovery 180 and all those, right? They're still?
Um, close, as soon as they, it just, some of these things, like a grading, like a grading permit, you know, that could take you two months, you know, miles.
Did you get a letter or something from somebody about that?
So-
Harney Road and, that was on the Soul property, about the Harney Road and one, 140?
With Recovery 180 had a really long delay because of the state highway plat that was necessary for them to deed over the, the part of the front edge to state highway. That finally got wrapped up.
They are working down there. I see backhoes and they're moving a lot of dirt around that 180.
Yeah, they're putting in their parking lot.
Yeah, okay.
Progressing.
Yeah, so once that, that's all been finalized, that's going to be a few, a couple of months before I can take that off of there. But like, um, let's see, a couple of things. We're hoping that very soon that the Tanuary Barn comes off. There's been some activity recently on the stormwater management aspects, and CDM Smith did issue a letter, and we just have to work through that administratively to see if that's all that's needed. There's two AVAPCs, unfortunately, I can't just go to a folder and say which one it was. Just, just because, you know.
Every born, what is that zone down there behind them?
Zone behind them?
For business, isn't it?
That's industrial zoning.
Industrial.
True, yeah.
It's on the-
Partway up to the Creamery?
Yes.
It, the area, it's on the comp plan for land use as mixed use, what do we call it? Urban mixed use or something like that, urban mixed. But we never created the actual zoning regulations to create the district on the zoning map. So the zoning map says it's industrial, the land use map says it's urban mix.
And so which is it now?
So, so it's, it's officially zoned restricted industrial.
Anything going on with the post office?
Not right now.
That would, that would be them coming to us, not us going to them. And my understanding is that, that building's been, from what I understand, deemed adequate. Again, that's not something that we, you know, it's like, you know, Jim, can you bring in the Wendy's tomorrow? You know what I mean, it's, you know, one of those.
It doesn't mean that nothing's going on in the background, there may still be
Yeah.
things going on in the background to try to change that, well, not to change the, the finding of adequate, but to convince the post office that they really do need a new facility, which the rest of us really think they need a new facility.
So on Garnet Ridge, so, so they, we approved their concept plan on a year ago, right? So it says their proposed preliminary plan must be submitted to the city for review within 12 months. So just because they gave us the paperwork, that's all they need, so? That's it, okay.
That's it, yeah, I've, I've looked over five, six times, that's, that's my interpretation as well, they have to submit.
Two months ago, wasn't it?
Yeah.
And then since the preliminary plan was submitted, there's no time limit on that that I saw. Okay.
Legal report. Okay.
Well, good evening, everybody. You can see we're starting to dance around the edges here with the, I call it the bypass, but the Mountain Brook issue. And as it relates to the legal report, Jim and his team have been doing a lot to try to start the negotiations for the easement that's needed from Flowserve. And there's really two easements, there's one for the road, obviously, and everything that goes with it, which would be like sidewalks and water and sewer lines and things like that. And you can imagine where that goes off perpendicular to 140. And then the Garnet Ridge project requires an easement parallel to 140 for a sidewalk, for connectivity. And the issue that we're facing, and maybe it's not an issue, but at some point in time, we have to jump in. You know, we've walked around and walked around, and what I mean by that is, Flowserve is agreeable to discussing these easements with us. We'll use Garnet Ridge, because that's easier to kind of have a concept. They're agreeable to giving the city the easement, because that would be our easement for our sidewalk. But we're not going to build the sidewalk, we don't want to pay for the sidewalk, we want Garnet Ridge to pay for the sidewalk. Well, Flowserve wants to make sure it's done and done right, so they want to hold the city accountable for that, and we want to hold Garnet Ridge accountable for doing it. But if Garnet Ridge doesn't build and doesn't get approvals or doesn't move forward in a smart pace, someone might be obligated to do all that improvement for Flowserve anyway, which might be the city. Now, if you can want to change gears to Mountain Brook, it's the same thing with Mountain Brook. We certainly want the right-of-way across there for a future bypass. And Flowserve, it might be willing to give it to us, they seem like they would be, but they're going to want certain guarantees, that it's going to be built, that they'd have access, that, you know, those types of things. And I would imagine that if they would give us this easement, they're going to want some type of timing or trigger, right? They just don't want to give it away and say, whenever you build this, 100 years from now, we're okay with it. So you see what I'm saying, is that we're dancing around the edge, because at some point in time, we're going to have to start committing to things. And then we're committing our goodwill and our things based on promises from developers who haven't really committed to their side because they don't have approvals to do that. So that's what we're doing, we're trying to get to the point where we're walking that line. And I think we, I think we're pretty successful with the sidewalk issue in the Garnet Ridge, because we play the long game, that's what Jim was saying earlier, is that we're going to be here forever. So Garnet Ridge, if we get this easement, and eventually we have to build this sidewalk, one day whoever builds Garnet Ridge is going to pay the city back. However, what point is there to have a sidewalk to nowhere until you have a need? So we're, we're kind of balancing those issues. And obviously, the road is a bigger issue, because if I were Flowserve and I said, well, I want an extra entrance off of that, I might count on that, because that means I'm not going to build a building where that entrance would come into my, my land. So I'm not going to be okay with you doing this road 25 years from now. I might say, you're going to have to build this stub now, even if you don't build your other part of it later, if I give it to you. And then as Jim was talking about earlier, the location of that, the physical location, has to match. It's like you're building a road in the middle, right? It has to match where it might cross 140 to go to the north, and it has to match where you can continue the road across Mountain Brook to the south. And once you negotiate this and get it from Flowserve, I'm not sure they're going to be okay with you trying to change it, left, right, and things like that. So it's, it's just wanted to let you know what we're up against. We're getting to that final point where we're opening the negotiations, we're getting all the technical things done, the descriptions. But I would imagine they'll come to a point where we have to commit. I won't use the colloquial saying, but it's something about a pot. And so we're eventually going to have to do that and decide where we head from there. And that's all I have, unless you have some questions for me.
Makes things more confusing, and when it pays, say, puts us in a standstill, makes decision-making a lot tougher on our end.
I mean, Jim and I have talked about it, and the problem that, what the city has to grasp or put their head around is, if you take all the development issues aside, and forget my little sidewalk issue, that's easy, the bypass is the one. Anytime, if, if you want this bypass to happen at some point in the future, then anytime that there is land available to get a piece of it, the city should buy it. The city should do what it takes to get it. Think about big companies that last forever, like Lehigh Cement. Anytime there's a farm available around one of their quarries, they buy it because they have a 100-year plan. Well, that's what the city should be thinking about, is if there's something available, we should do it. Unless you don't want to do the bypass, and then you can walk away. The county bought that piece of land for the bypass that is across the street from where Antrim Boulevard ends. The town bought another section further on into the field. So the idea would be, what are we doing even if we build the bypass 50 years from now? Shouldn't we be trying to amass the land necessary to do that? And if you back that into the Flowserve, maybe it is worth a commitment to get that entrance from Flowserve, if that's where we think we're going to be able to do it.
But what are you doing on the other end? Are you in negotiations with AVAPCO to buy that land to continue the road?
Not me, I, I don't know whether the, the town was. I know that when AVAPCO wanted to do their, one of their improvements, they've done so many, I, I don't know which one it is, but I think it was the off-site parking or something like that. One of the issues we immediately brought up to them was, you need to annex that in, and you need to guarantee we're going to have that, that road, that right-of-way, because that would have connected 194 to where we own, more or less, all the way over by Antrim. And you can imagine that they didn't really, they weren't focused on that, they were focused on what they wanted. And they said, hey, we're, we're not going to do that. In fact, they redid their project, I think, so they wouldn't disturb that area. But you have a great point, there needs to be like an all-hands effort to say, we're going to acquire these things, and like a standing order, like, like you would in your, in your own personal life. If you said, I always wanted to buy the lot across the street from my house to store my trailer on it. Well, then you keep enough money in the bank so that if that ever comes for sale, you're ready to buy it. I don't know if we're at that commitment level yet.
Well, I mean, I, you know, just for, for, for me, I, I think we have to, you know, it's time to take a leadership position and say, we need to make this happen. You know, one of the things that came out of the survey for the comprehensive plan was that people want the bypass. So if that's where the city wants to go, then it may be incumbent upon us to take that leadership position to go start chasing it. You know, one of the things that, and Bill, you and I have talked about this, where if we are leading and, and making this first piece happen, does that make it easier for others to follow along to help us make the next piece happen? You know, we, we have to be serious about it, and, and I think that that's, you know, again, that's why I'm not opposed to, to, to what Mr. Hackett came in and, and, you know, I don't want to bring that project to a stop by any means, but we want to make sure that it makes sense for the individual things that are happening there. But, you know, we need to keep, we need to move forward.
Thank you. Thanks, Jay.
All right, guys.
Thank you.
County update, Tiffany. Welcome.
Commissioners. Tonight, we have about four updates, water, sewer, master plan. The spring amendments already, even though we're not even in December yet, will be due the first of February. For the housing study, we, it is set to go to, before the Board of County Commissioners on the 19th of December, and that'll be the final of the study. Text, and we did send that to the city for comment as well, the draft, anyway. Text amendments before the Board of County Commissioners next week, because we had, we had public hearing on them on the 14th, is the Housing Expansion and Affordability Act, changes to our code that are involving that and housing in the county. And then the other one is the solar, the bulk requirements for solar. And then also, we're going to be talking about development rights and responsibilities agreements for a fee schedule, and if that's necessary for if, if a developer comes forth with a petition for a DRA, or Development Rights and Responsibility Agreement. And then for the master plan, as you are working on yours, we are about the same pace. We do have a website, carol2035.org. We've started some background information that the planning commission, just like you're involved in right now, too, we're bringing that to them to discuss. And then we're going to start public outreach in January and February, and we are starting discussions of how exactly we can- of how exactly we can involve the municipalities, because our planning commission has already said out loud during the meetings that we, they are aware that we can rely on the municipality sometimes for things, and they just really want to have your voice as part of, of the overall master plan as we move forward as well.
Thank you very much. Tiffany?
Tiffany?
Old business. Come plan. Comments or anything?
Just other than to say, you know, I'm very pleased with the amount of response that we got. When you look at it in terms of households, it was a pretty good response. It's, they, you know, from what, from what Emily was saying the other night, it was, you know, very clear what they're looking for. So I think that kind of gives us some things to take, take a lead on. I'm going to be putting together an email to council to ask the, the questions that I brought up back in, I think it was March. And I'm going to put together an email to council and ask them for written responses from each of the council members.
They won't have that all put together until January meeting, right? Is that what they agreed?
Yeah, January.
Yeah, January's our next meeting with them, right?
Be interesting to see how they present the data.
Comment you'd like? Was, it looks like unless we really want to, our next meeting would be December the 30th, and normally we do not, so that would be January 27th, 2025, unless there's an urgent meeting we would have to have the 1st of January. Add if it comes up, Darrell, is that okay with you?
Fair enough.
Okay, good of me. Make a motion, adjourn.
Mars? Bill? All in favor, seen five of a seen eye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Thank you, folks, for showing up.